Hi, welcome everybody. My name is Wayne Kazmercheck. I'm the superintendent for White Bear Lake Area Schools and it's my pleasure to get this evening kicked off. We've got a Lions Club Peace Poster Contest winner. We've got Nordic Ski, North Campus Choir students, and girls hockey here this evening. So, without further ado, Mr. Schakenmeyer, Tim Schakenmeyer, Central Middle School Principal, will come up and get us started. So, welcome.
Thank you. Welcome everyone. Our first student to be recognized tonight represented the district at the state level in the Lions Club Peace Poster Contest. In fact, she represented White Bear Lake Area Schools in the contest's district level, which included Wisconsin, North Dakota, South Dakota, and Ontario. Please put your hands together for Stephanie Tice. Carrie Rysdoffer was her teacher/advisor. And joining us tonight to recognize the student is also Lion Bob Lundberg, who is in charge of the International Peace Poster Contest. Thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate your efforts in offering this opportunity to our students each year. Mr. Bob Lundberg. And if you haven't guessed already, this is the poster. Okay, so at this time, Ari's going to be taking some photographs and if you want to, Mom, if you want to come up and get a good, come on up and get in, you're more than welcome to. And do you want this, do you want the poster? Yep.
Would you be willing to share it? I'd like to get a little of the front. That would be super good. There we go. Perfect. There we go. Perfect. Okay, there we go. Ready? There. That's good. Okay, one, two, three. I'm gonna take a few here. And I'm gonna move out of the way for any parents. One, two, three. Thank you. One. There you go. Perfect. There we go. Ready? There. That's good. Okay, one, two, three. I'm gonna take a few here. And then can I get a photo with just this kid?
Yep.
Thank you. Do you want to be in this one too? Oh, perfect. Thank you. Well, I said, "Mom." There you go. Ready? One, two, three. And then I'll move out of the way. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Allison Gillespie, the principal at North Campus, and I have our next honorees. Next, we will recognize students who made the news back in December as being ranked in the top 10 skiers to watch, and the predictions became true. Congratulations to the following students who participated in state-level honors in Nordic Ski. Olivia Schwintek, who earned eighth place in state. Trig Solberg, who earned sixth place in state. Phil Whacker, Nordic Ski Assistant Coach. And Seth Salander, Nordic Ski Head Coach. Unfortunately, they aren't here with us tonight, but if we could clap in their honor, that would be great. Our next group of students represented the district in the American Coral Directors Association, ASC, excuse me, ACDA, Ninth and Tenth Grade Honored Choir in February, one of whom also participated at the national level last week. Anna Barton. Alex Beggie. Grace Fink. A.J. Routenberg. Isabel Sarn. Noel Summers. Kyle Steinberg. Abigail White, who also earned Ninth and Tenth Honor Choir and ACDA National Ten Twelve Honor Choir. And Director Eliza Snortland. If the family members of our students who are honored could stand to also be honored, please. And then we'll have the students come back to take a picture with our board.
Perfect. Yeah, Kim, if you just want to pop your head either way. There you go. Perfect. Perfect, perfect. Okay, Kim. There we go. Okay. Here we go. One, two, three. Perfect. You're done now? One. Okay. Keep up. There you go. One, two, three. I'm gonna take a few here. And I'm gonna move out of the way. Can I get one more? Um, can you pop your head up one more time? You were totally covered. I couldn't even see it in the, okay. There we go. Okay, one more. Here we go. Perfect. One, two, three. Perfect. And then board members, thank you so much. One, two, three. Thank you. Here we go. One, two, three. There we go. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I am Don Bosch, Principal of the South Campus. Congratulations to all of our students being recognized this evening. Our final group to be recognized is our girls hockey team, which competed in the state tournament for the first time since 2002 after winning a well-fought and exciting section championship game. Congratulations to these following student athletes. Riley Dow. Abigail De La Rosa. Calla was also Pioneer Press Girls Hockey Player of the Year and Minnesota 2019 Senior Goalie of the Year. Gabby Hofeld. Natasha Larson. Ellie Sauerauer. Student manager Lauren Ferber. Student manager Jordan Gast. Assistant Coach Mark Domshot. Assistant Coach Randy Keeger.
We do have a member from the 2002 state team here tonight. I was able to get one of them here. Carrie Keeger, Mewks, please.
Assistant Coach Carrie Quapik. And Head Coach Jerry Quapik. Parents in the audience also, please stand to be recognized as well. All right, ladies, back for a picture.
Okay. I think if we can start, I'd like to stop at the counter. You might need to do, okay, okay. So, we can maybe, sorry, I'm trying to see you later. Two white people. Very nice. You're good. We're for a bottle. Very nice. I'm gonna suck Tiffany's down. There you go. Perfect. Oh, perfect. There we go. Okay. I'm gonna move out. Zoe, your head was down. Her head was down. Come on. Zoe's head was down the entire time. Hey, Zoe, keep your head up. Where's the burner button? Hey, just want to just approach here or something. That gets fine.
All right, here it's go. Push the button.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, everybody. I think we still have some cookies in the back, so grab some for the way home. All right. Have a good night.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bell Lloyd. Chapman.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Fahy here. Mullin.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
And Wilson.
Here.
All right, would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda before us?
Some moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison, a second by Mr. Wilson. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda. This has our sundry items that we typically, that comes before us every month. One of the things that we're very thankful for is the generosity of the community in the way of gifts and donations back to the district, and this month is no exception. So, I'd like to acknowledge them and thank them for their donations. Do we have a motion for, to adopt the consent agenda?
Some moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda? This will require a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, we have our consent agenda is adopted. This is the portion in the meeting that we open up for public comment. Typically, the way that it works is there's a white card over there on the table. We ask you to fill out the white card and bring it up to the desk. I do not see anybody, see any cards. Is there any one that would like to address the school board? Seeing none, we will move into our first informational item, C1, which is the Glassroot Fellowship Grants. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation has approved 12 2019 Glassroot Fellowship Grants totaling $24,984. Mary Dolly, Glassroot Fellowship Grants Committee Chair, is here tonight to provide information about the Glassroot Fellowship Grants and answer questions that you may have. Welcome, Mary.
Welcome.
Thank you. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation was so pleased to be able to award 12 grants this last week to 14 teachers within our district. We have Ted Glassroot, who was a 1933 graduate of White Bear Lake High School, and his family, who have given us a very generous endowment to work with. And each year, we are able to provide opportunities for teachers in our district to go above and beyond and to dream a little bit and to further their education. And so, this year, we were actually able to send people to Europe, New Zealand, South Africa, China, as well as several places stateside to help them explore and to be able to bring more things back to the classroom for us. The impact of the Glassroot is every year just makes me take my breath because we had a couple of teachers who had come back from last year to present to us last week, and they were so passionate about the trip that they had taken through the South to rewalk in the steps of Martin Luther King and to be able to bring those items back to the classroom. And every year, every grant that we have given has just been so rewarding for these people. So, it's with great pleasure that we can continue to do this for our teachers in the district. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments? I just want to thank you very much for your work. This is, for coordinating this. This is amazing stuff, and we really appreciate not only you and the foundation, but the grants back for the staff, and thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We love doing it.
Ms. Fahy?
And I just wanted to add, the one you just referenced, the Ark of the Moral Universe that Tiffany Dietrich and Kathy Olson did.
Right.
Last summer, they also reported to, were a member of Equity Alliance Minnesota, and the meeting that was held here, they presented to the Equity Alliance Minnesota Board, which is made up of representatives from other school districts, and they really, really impressed Equity Alliance and the other school districts who really want to tap into what they've done.
Awesome.
So, it has an impact more than just in the White Bear Lake District, these grants.
Many of our grants have done that, so yes.
Yeah, so thank you, Mary.
All right.
Thank you, Mary.
You are very welcome.
All right. We will move on to our second informational item, C2, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board. So, before tonight's meeting, we recognize students who received state-level honors in the Lions Club Peace Poster Contest, Nordic Ski, Choir, and Girls Hockey. Congratulations, Bears. White Bear Lake Area students thoroughly enjoyed February's I Love to Read Month celebrations and activities. Throughout the month, students enjoyed read-a-thons, guest readers, and special assemblies, to name just a few of the activities. I would like to especially acknowledge our school board members and other community members who participated in February's reading activities in our schools. White Bear students are getting comfortable on stage this spring, with many elementary schools hosting student productions recently and in the near future. Details for all productions are available on the district website. Central and Sunrise Park Middle School students are also honing their skills on stage with the middle school musical of Willy Wonka Jr. planned for April 25th through the 27th. Tickets will be available online starting March 22nd at the district website. An unlimited number of free tickets will be available at our senior program later in March as well. The district is hosting its sixth Staff and Community Mental Well-Being Series Session, ADHD/ADD supports and toolbox. The event will take place at 7:00 PM on March 19th at the White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus Theater. And this month's recognitions include National Nutrition Month, Music in Our Schools Month, Women's History Month. On March 1st, we had Employee Appreciation Day. March 2nd was Read Across America Day. March 4th through the 8th is National School Breakfast Week. March 4th through the 8th is Per Professional Recognition Week. March 11th through 15th is our spring break. All right, and then finally, I just want to highlight a recently completed community survey and touch on an upcoming community survey. So, thank you to those community members who were contacted and participated in a community survey in December, providing important feedback to the district as we implement our comprehensive facilities planning process. Findings included 90% of those surveyed rated the quality of the district as good or excellent. That's a very high mark compared to other metro-area school districts. So, again, 90% of those surveyed rated the quality of the district as good or excellent. The highest-rated characteristics of the district were the quality of our teachers, academic achievement, the variety of programs offered, and our broad curriculum. The high rating of the district's academics really stood out, as did the rating of the district's athletic programs and our music, theater, and arts offerings. Community members had high level of agreement to the district providing a safe learning environment, being a good value for their investment, and being trusted to do the right thing and being accountable. Related specifically to learning, more than three-quarters of the respondents placed importance on students having input and choice in their learning, which is interesting given our new strategic plan and the concept of student agency being at the forefront of our new plan. 95% of those surveyed placed importance on students being able to work together. More than 80% of respondents placed importance on the flexibility of learning spaces and classrooms designed to student learning. We will continue to collect community input and will facilitate a district-wide paper survey with an optional electronic submission later this spring. We would appreciate it if residents would take the time to provide feedback to the survey when it is received in the mail. Community feedback will be of utmost importance in any plan that we implement related to facilities. With that, I'll turn it over for our student liaison report.
As many of, oh, as many of you already know, our high school hockey program has had great success this year. Just two weeks ago, the girls hockey team played in the state tournament for the first time since 2002, and this Thursday, the boys team will be competing in the state tournament for the first time since 2011. Great job, teams, and good luck. Last Monday, the Black Girl Magic Club put together an event in the South Theater. It was an opportunity for the students in this club to showcase their talents and celebrate Black History Month. There were speeches, spoken words, dance performances, and singing. I know everyone that attended was truly moved and had an amazing time. This past weekend, 10 seniors participated in the 14-hour MathWorks Challenge. These students experienced what it's like to work as a team to tackle the real-world problem of teen substance abuse with math modeling and problem-solving. Also this weekend was the ACDA National Honors Choir Conference, where our junior liaison, Maddie Carroll, and two other White Bear students represented our school in Kansas City, singing with kids from all across the U.S. Finally, with spring break only a few days away, I wish everyone safe travels, and for those of you staying in Minnesota, good luck with all the snow.
All right, thank you very much. Questions regarding the Superintendent's Report? All right. We will move on to our first discussion item, D1, which is the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution on Concurrents. Ms. Paul?
All right. Chair Mullin, Dr. Kazmercheck, Ms. Pratt, and members of the board. The purpose of this discussion item is to share the results of the vote of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee in terms of their resolution of concurrents. And with us tonight, we have Jordan Zickerman. She is our current, one of our cultural liaisons, and she also serves as the Indian Education Program Lead. We also have American Indian Parent Advisory Chair, Andrew Adams, and American Indian Education Activities Coordinator, Christine Sirmack. So, this is Jordan Zickerman.
Welcome, Jordan.
Thank you. Bu Zhou, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. As Sarah mentioned, the APAC American Indian Parent Advisory Committee is composed of parents and guardians of our American Indian students at White Bear Lake. We are very, very fortunate to have an active committee that meets regularly to express our views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the needs of the American Indian children in our district. Tonight, you have the opportunity to hear from our committee chair, Andrew Adams, and our activities coordinator, Christine Sirmack, regarding the committee's annual vote of concurrents. So, at this point, I will hand it over to Andrew. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board. My name is Andrew Adams. I'm the chair of the committee. I've got three children in the district. I've got a 16-year-old daughter at North, a 13-year-old son at Central, and a fifth grader at Otter Lake. And as Jordan mentioned, the committee is pretty active, as required by Minnesota State law. The Minnesota Department of Education always wants to hear from the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee every year for each individual school district about votes of concurrents, if the parents are in favor of the trajectory of the curriculum and the programming that school districts in Minnesota provide to the American Indian students that are in their district. And so, one of the purposes of me being here this evening is to report to you all that the committee did vote in favor of the concurrents. So, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee for the district is in favor of the trajectory that the district is going in. And so, that's a good thing. That's a good thing that the stakeholders that are intimately involved with the education of those young folks, i.e. their parents, are in agreement with the programming and the curriculum that the district is providing. And with that being said, you know, curious if any of you have any questions about, you know, about the committee or any concerns about the committee or anything like that?
Any questions for Mr. Adams? Mr. Wilson?
Not a question, but a comment. It's just very good news. Glad to hear it, and we hope to continue to meet the needs of our American Indian students with the programming that we offer here in our district.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Personally, I'd like to thank you very much for your work. I mean, we really appreciate it, and we learn a little bit more every time we hear, every time you come in, so we really appreciate that.
Okay, great. Thank you. It's an honor to serve in the capacity and really appreciate the work of the board and the district for, not just the American Indian students in the district, but for all of the students.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our second discussion item, which is D2, which is the first reading of- regarding the committee's annual vote of concurrents. So at this point, I will hand it over to Andrew.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board. My name is Andrew Adams, I'm the chair of the committee. I've got three children in the district. I've got a 16-year-old daughter at North, a 13-year-old son at Central, and a fifth grader at Otter Lake. And, and as Jordan mentioned, the committee is pretty active as required by Minnesota state law. The Minnesota Department of Education always wants to hear from the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee every year for each individual school district about votes of concurrents, if the parents are in favor of the trajectory of the curriculum and the programming that school districts in Minnesota provide to the American Indian students that are in their district. And so one of the purposes of me being here this evening is to report to you all that the committee did vote in favor of the concurrents. So the, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee for the district is in favor of the trajectory that the district is going in. And so that's a good thing. That's a good thing that the stakeholders that are intimately involved with the education of those young folks, i.e. their parents, are in agreement with the programming and the curriculum that the district is providing. And with that being said, you know, curious if any of you have any questions about, you know, about the committee or, or any concerns about the committee or anything like that.
Any questions for Mr. Adams? Mr. Wilson?
Not a question, but a comment. Just very good news, glad to hear it. And we hope to continue to meet the needs of our American Indian students with the programming that we offer here in our district.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Personally, I'd like to thank you very much for your work. I mean, we really appreciate it and, and we learn a little bit more every time we hear, every time you come in, so we really appreciate that.
Okay, great, thank you. It's an honor to serve in the capacity and, and really appreciate the work of the, of the board and the district for not just the American Indian students in the, in the district, but for all of the students.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our second discussion item, which is D2, which is the first reading of policy, excuse me, 514 Bully and Prevention Policy, Policy 615 Testing Accommodations, Modifications, and Exemptions for IEPs, Policy 618 Assessment of Student Achievement, Policy 713 Student Activity Accounting, Policy 806 Crisis Management Policy. Are there any questions regarding those policies, comments? I know that this is the first reading, they will come back before the board, but just want to make sure that we ask any questions. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, on the 504 policy, the changes were massive. Was there a legal shift? Because I noticed a lot of the legal references were lined out as well. And I just, so is there a new set of laws that we must conform to? And that's what drove our multiple changes in that policy?
So that was Policy 615, Section 504, is what you're referring to?
Yes.
And Dr. Kazmercheck is at, can you help us with that one? Or is there someone that should be?
Who took that one through the committee? Assuming it was statutory changes. If anybody wants to talk about the 504 portion of that.
Oh, that's, I'm looking right now. So it's 615, 504 is, Scott, do you have a, Mr. Wilson, do you have a page that you can direct us to?
Really, it's just the whole policy, but if you go to the end of it, you know, most of the legal references have been crossed out and, you know, whole paragraphs have been struck from the policy and rewritten.
Is there, can, so can you talk to us a little bit about the policy and the changes and kind of why they occurred?
Yeah, absolutely. So some of the changes that have occurred are because of some of the changes around the standardized assessments. And so because we're not doing some of the BSTs and some of the different grad requirements, and they've shifted, these accommodations are now looking around, more around the ACTs and those types of graduation requirements. So it's the major tests that have changed.
So essentially a paradigm shift.
Exactly.
Policy catching up with statute, changes at the, with assessments.
Okay.
Are there questions regarding the policies that are before us for first reading? Mr. Wilson?
Another one, and the one on safety, were we up to that one yet with the evacuations and everything? Is this basically on the fire safety portion of it and?
Can you give us a policy number so that we can refer to it?
That 806, the crisis management, are you talking about?
That the last one?
Must be the last one.
I think so.
Yeah, the last one.
And it's where they're addressing, you know, the fire safety and all that.
Fire drills.
And when faculty, staff, and students are to be evacuated from a building, it says to go 50 feet, which, you know, that varies with communities as to what that standard is. The question is, how do we know where 50, the 50-foot line is from the buildings? Is there some sort of marker that's placed in the?
We don't, we don't have any kind of a marker, but there are staff always with students to ensure that we're of a certain distance away from, from the building. So, but there is no particular marker outside of buildings.
I personally experienced much the same. It relied on, you know, the eye of faculty, but they tended to be short. You know, and the fire marshal pointed that out a couple of times in my old district. And, you know, that was my concern, if we just had a way to be consistent, that we were the right distance away. That's all.
I want to acknowledge, thank you, Lisa, for answering those questions for us. Is there any other questions regarding the policies for their first reading? Okay, so those policies will be brought before us at the next meeting to be voted on. And with that, we will go into our only operational item, which is Operation E1. And we're going to do these in one fell swoop. We need to take board action for our second reading on Policy 414, 415, 422, and 619. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. All those, any discussion regarding those policies? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting those policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Those policies are adopted. Now it is a time in our program that we, our meeting that we do, board forum. Is there anything to come before us, board forum? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I just, as a board now, I'd like to acknowledge the achievements of particularly our girls' hockey team. It's great, it's been a long time since we've reappeared in the state tournament. But particularly, the goalie that really carried the team, shot out the competition all the way through the sectionals. I mean, that's just astounding, you know. And, and that is Calla Frank, and she was also selected as the Girls Hockey Goalie of the Year. So just tremendous credit to her and, you know, helping the team, carrying the team. And I'd like to point that out and just formally acknowledge that here with the board. And also, you know, the, the other teams that were acknowledged as well, the Nordic Skiing and so on. And a great job by our students, just, you know, doing their best, you know, when they're representing our schools in athletics. So just wanted to say that.
Any other comments? Ms. Ellison?
Just yesterday, we had the Minnesota Council for the Social Studies Award Ceremony up in Duluth, and I was able to be the one to award Angela Bianco the Elementary Social Studies Teacher of the Year Award for the state of Minnesota. And so we were up in Duluth, and Angela is a fourth-grade teacher at Matoska Elementary. And so we had a really wonderful ceremony with 80 people. And Mary Catherine Ricker, in attendance, who's the new Commissioner of Education, was there as well. So she really, Ms. Bianco really does the district proud, and it was an honor for me to be able to, to be there with her.
All right. Ms. Fahey?
I have, and I mentioned this last month, but McKenna wasn't here, so I'm going to mention it again. But thank you, McKenna, for representing the students of the district and our boards so well at the Minnesota School Boards Association Conference, where you participated as one of two students answering questions from board members about the role of the student liaison. You did an excellent job. Thank you. And then I do have one other thing also. Just the Equity Alliance, the Culturally Responsive Board Leadership Training Workshop. I attended the first one, there are two more. The next one is March 19th. And it really applies to what we were talking about at our work study. It's looking at equity and policies. So if you can attend at all, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. A light meal is provided. And then there is another one on April 16th, the third in the series. But you can, you don't have to go to all three, you can go to one. So if anyone is available, it is really worthwhile. There's board members from other districts there that are members of the collaborative. So I'd highly recommend them, they are quite, quite good.
Anything else? I just want to make sure that all of our students remember in spring break next, spring break next week to dress warm, even though it's going to be 80 degrees. And hopefully, everybody has a good and safe week and enjoy, enjoy their time. So if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I'll second that, we are adjourned.